Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Could we have roll call, please?
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Crowe Kramer.
Here.
Alderman Keahan.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Spencer.
Here.
Alderman Benner. Alderman Taylor and Collier have been excused.
The first item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing. It's a special use permit for St. Patrick's congregation for a parking lot expansion at 320 Nicolay Boulevard in Manassia. Director Buck, could you tell us a little bit about the project?
Sure. This item went to the last Plan Commission meeting. It's a special use permit for St. Pat's. Basically, they are proposing to build a parking lot in the location of the former school site, part of it, a 21-stall code compliant parking lot with some landscaping and some lighting. And because it's zoned R1, church is a special use, so this would be an expansion of the special use, which requires them to get Plan Commission review and council approval.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this special use permit this evening? If you would like to, you could step up to the microphone. Seeing no one, we'll call this public hearing to a close and we'll move on to public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If anyone would like to address the Common Council this evening, if you could step up to the microphone and state your name and address. That would be you, Jeff, if you'd like to.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Jeff Sturgill. I'm the village manager for Fox Crossing as well as the town administrator for the remainder of the Town of Manassia. I just wanted to come and talk with you guys briefly to make sure we're all on the same sheet of music here, because I noticed that you have an annexation on the agenda for this evening. I guess the concern is, is the territory you're looking to annex is in the village of Fox Crossing. And so, I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that. And I'd like to make sure, too, that, for the public record, the Department of Administration agrees with our determination and sent a letter, excuse me, to the property owner, and basically stating here, "The petition area for annexation is for territory formerly within the Town of Manassia. However, due to the attachment ordinance passed by the village of Fox Crossing on September 22, 2016, this territory now appears to be in the village of Fox Crossing. Therefore, the department is not able to perform its review under 660217, parent six of the Wisconsin statutes, and is returning the petition." So, I just wanted to say that we're willing to definitely work with you guys. The parcel, if you would like us to detach the parcel with you into the city, we're certainly willing to do that. And I just want you all to know that we're willing to work with you on this. We don't want to have a problem with the property owner, or not allow a development, or anything along those lines. We're willing to detach the property to you. But I just wanted to say that, I mean, I am concerned when I see an annexation petition for territory that's in the village. So, I guess that's really all I had to say. And I'd be available for questions, or if anybody ever wants to reach out to me and talk to me about that. Just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgill. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the report of department head, staff, and consultants. Following the production of the agenda for this evening, the Nina Manassia Fire Rescue asked that we hold on to the strategic plan presentation, just because of the length of the agenda tonight. They were being rather nice to us, trying not to keep us here all evening. So, we're going to hold off on that one until the next meeting. And we'll move on then to the minutes and communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time, I make a motion to receive and put on file minutes A through J and communications K through R.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Right.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item G is the consent agenda. There are seven items. The minutes to approve from the Common Council for October 3. The Administration Committee recommendations from October 3, including the joint powers agreement with Winnebago County Emergency 911 system for 2016 through 2017. The 2017 health, dental, and vision insurance is, including a two-year agreement with Wisconsin Counties Association Group Health Trust to provide health insurance at the rates and terms listed in the memo dated 9/29/16. A two-year agreement from January 1, 2017, through December 31, 2018 with Delta Dental. And a four-year agreement with Superior Vision to provide vision insurance at the rates listed in the memo from September 29. The Board of Public Works recommendations from October 3, including payment number two to Vinton Construction for downtown street walkway and electrical improvements in the amount of $83,978.31. Payment number four to Northeast Asphalt for new street construction and reconstruction in the amount of $102,126.99. A recommendation to award the Midway Underground Loop Project to JNR Underground in the amount of $154,756.25. This is a Manassia Utilities project. And the Park and Recreation Board recommendations from October 11 to increase the seasonal slip rental rate at the Marina from 3850 a foot to 3875 a foot in 2017. Does anyone wish to have any of the items separated this evening? Alderman Benner?
Item seven.
If there's no other items, do we have a motion to approve the remaining items? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I make a motion to approve consent agenda items one through six.
There's a motion, a second. The item that was separated was the seasonal slip rentals. Could we have a roll call vote on those items, please?
Will she carry down roll call six, zero?
Item seven is the seasonal slip rentals for the Manassia Marina. Did you have a question about that, or?
Yeah, I do. And it's, I can make a motion to approve at first, if you wish, or?
Sure, either way.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda item number seven, increase the seasonal slip rental rate at the Marina from 3850 a foot to 3875 a foot in 2017.
There's a motion, a second. Go ahead, Alderman Benner.
The only question I had with that is, every year, we seem to come back and it's almost a nickel and dime thing, or something. And I really wasn't sure if we had feedback from the tenants at all, that if it made more sense to every three years, or something, do a little bit more of a substantial increase, rather than every year, do a little bit? Or does it not seem to matter to the folks at all? Brian, is that something that you would comment on?
Sure. I guess this topic has been on the Park Board agenda for the past three or four years. And they've adopted this philosophy that, you know, a small increase, I guess, is more palatable than waiting, you know, enacting a dollar, or a dollar and a quarter increase. So, this is, I believe, the fourth year of a more of an incremental step. And I think Harbor Master Schabock concurs with that philosophy. And it just, like I said, it's just a little more palatable for the renters. And we really haven't had any complaints about going this route for the past few years.
Okay. Just sometimes you hear folks, they'll say that, you know, "I'd rather you just increase it more now, and then just leave it alone for several years." And I don't mean from the Marina, I mean from other perspectives. And I just wasn't sure in this case. And you hate to give the impression that you're just going to nickel and dime all the time. And I just wanted to get a little feedback on that. But that was the only question that I had on that. But if the Park Board, if they determine that that's the way to go, and the folks at the Marina seem to not have a problem with it, well, I won't pay with it as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Will she carry down roll call six, zero?
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for October 5 through October 13. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of October 5, 2016, to October 13, 2016, in the amount of $711,207.60.
There's a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Will she carry down roll call six, zero?
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2015 through 17. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period, as listed under approved in the Police Department's memo dated October 12, 2016.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Will she carry down roll call six, zero?
Item three is the Fox Valley Mutual Aid Agreement. Lieutenant Bonneville, did you want to fill us in on what this is all about?
Sure. The only thing that was changed in there is, any references to the Town of Manassia was changed to the Village of Fox Crossing. And the Appleton Police Chief's name was changed to the current, Todd Thomas.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion, or any other questions for Lieutenant Bonneville? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'll make that motion, to approve the Fox Valley Mutual Aid Agreement amendment.
There's a motion, a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Will she carry down roll call six, zero?
Item four is a lease agreement between the Manassia Joint School District and the City of Manassia for 100 Main Street. Do we have any, do we have a motion or discussion at this time? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the lease agreement between Manassia Joint School District and the City of Manassia at 100 Main Street, Manassia.
There's a motion, a second. Do we need any additional clarification on that, Attorney Captain?
If I could ask that the motion be to approve entering into a lease agreement with the Manassia School District with the basic lease terms, as are outlined in the summary of basic lease information, that would be preferable. There are a few wordsmithing changes that still need to be made, as far as the actual language that's contained in this. Some of the changes, I didn't have strike-throughs and underlines to see exactly what they were, so we were looking at three different copies of the agreement. So, there are a few things that still need to be adjusted. But I think that they could be done outside of bringing it back to the Common Council. It has nothing to do with, it's legalese, it has nothing to do with the actual terms that are provided in that summary.
Alderman Nichols?
I'm comfortable with changing my motion to what Attorney Captain stated.
I don't know who seconded it. Mike? Okay. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we have further discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
I guess my first question on this would be, as far as I read through the rent adjustment, 3.3 on that bunch of sheets, it looks, it's a little complex, I don't look, when you read through it. Can I just get some clarification on that, how that'll go about, once we get past that, what is it, a five, six years, or whatever, the lease fixed rate? How will that be increased? Or potential increase, if it doesn't go down, maybe?
Attorney Captain?
What they are proposing is that it's based on the Consumer Price Index, and then that's something that gets published by the US government. So, it's a number that would get published. You'd be looking back at whatever's the most recent available month, based on the end of the agreement and the next effective date. So, we're always looking at January. And so, then whatever's the most available percentage increase, that would be the percentage increase that would be applied. It's a typical one that is contained in commercial lease agreements.
So, we just can't escalate it to so much that it would be unfeasible for us going forward?
It's based on something that, correct, that would be whatever the published number is. Of course, we don't know what that published number is, so then there's a question there as to what could it be. There isn't a maximum. As I recall, the maximum numbers were, what, back in the early 80s, I think, 1980s, we had some pretty high inflation numbers. And then there are some cancellation, ability to cancel. And I think that's after 12 years. So, there are a few years that are in there that, you know, based on whatever the Consumer Price Index is showing, the rate could be increased by, you know, whatever that percentage is. We don't know. And then I know that there, well, they actually may have taken some of that language out, but they aren't necessarily required to do that either. So, depending on what that is, if we appealed to the school board and asked them not to increase it that much, there's always that potential, if it was a high percentage.
So, we do have two representatives from the school district here. And I don't know if the attorney captured what the intent of that was. But my understanding was the intent that that was the maximum, and the school district wants to recover its cost, and could go up to that point, if it needed to, to recover its costs, but did not have to go up to that point. And they're nodding their heads yes.
Do you want me to comment about the "may"?
That, well, we were reading it, and there's a "shall" in there, rather than a "may" that used to be there. That's one of the changes that we would like to include, which would allow us, allow the school district to say, "Well, it's a 3% increase, but we really only need 2% to cover our costs, so we're going to make that the amount that we need this year." That's one of the changes that we are looking at. So, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Alex, okay. Are there any other questions? Apparently, no one is going to, okay.
No, I'm trying to get on.
Okay, there we go. Alex came up.
I'm sorry.
Okay. There we go.
All right.
Attorney Captain, I'm familiar with the CPI as it relates to commodities, but I'm
not familiar with the index for, is this a specific index for rental, business rental properties? And if yes, is it regional?
It is, let me just look here, what they have in here. Well, it's urban Midwest, so of course, they have all sorts of consumer price indices. So, this one is specific to urban Midwest.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just touching on that, it seems to me that there should be, instead of using the CPI from that month, that there should be some type of a median that would be used, or something, because it could go either way on that. And I think that's something that should be looked at, because, you know, it does, the CPI does fluctuate. And to narrow it down to just, whenever the time we're sitting at the table, we're going to look up the CPI and say, "That's our number," that doesn't seem to hold a lot of logic. There should be a median on that. And when we talked about this two weeks ago, I left off asking Peggy how the numbers were going to work. And you're going to be working with everybody, see if all the numbers came in, and have, has everything come together on that? And do the numbers work on this, from your opinion? That this actually makes sense?
We don't have the build-out numbers yet, I don't believe. However, everything I've seen, as far as the operational costs that you have in your packet compared to the lease rates, are still in check.
And right now, we're looking at a build-out of about $450,000. Is that right, Mr. Mayor?
$350,000. And then we have $50,000 included for furnishing. Should we need some new furnishings, because what we have here wouldn't fit, or wouldn't be usable anymore. And then we have money to upgrade and replace our ancient technology up there in the corner, and some of the microphones and other things that would be in the council chambers. So, we're, what we have budgeted right now is $407,000. And I, Brian may be able to comment a little bit on where the numbers are coming for the build-outs. I'm going to need you to use the microphone now, please.
Yeah, right now, preliminary, we went out into official process, but we just went out and asked prices. And for your build-out, we're coming in right under $350,000. So, that's what we see as the max.
Budget numbers, just budget numbers at this point?
Correct.
Just square foot budget numbers, or?
No, them actually coming in and surveying it.
Okay.
We don't see it's going to be any more than $350,000.
Okay. So, again, I'm back to, we still have some things that really aren't ironed out at this point. But was there contingency dollars in those numbers as well, or is that pretty much, that's going to be our cap?
That's what's put in the budget right now. We could put additional contingency in there. There, those are borrowed funds, if we wanted to. I think Peggy looked at me like, maybe we cannot do that. No?
Cannot do what?
Put addition, we, these are capital improvements numbers, so those would not affect our levy limits, or our...
You can put a contingency in there.
Yeah, so we could do that, okay. You just looked up very suddenly when I said that. I wasn't sure if I was misspeaking. So, we could put additional funds in there if we wanted to. Right now, it looks like those should be sufficient, though.
So, the savings that are reflected in our memo, Peggy is, as far as you can tell with what the information you've been giving, is, it is a financial benefit to the city to do this at this point?
Not considering this building, yes. It's very clear. The numbers have been validated that were in there. I actually had a question from Alderman Nichols about the change in how much we pay over time. And I had gone back and done a little, from 2013 up to 2017 budget, and it really fluctuates from year to year, depending on what kind of repairs and maintenance and different things happen here at the, at this building. But that $110,000 number is a real number.
Okay. I didn't recall seeing anything in there for what it was going to cost to maintain this building yet.
There is. I see a question within the FAQs, and I believe, about $12,000, $12,500, our annual cooling costs for City Hall. So, if this building would sit vacant, and we would continue heating and doing those things within City Hall, it's mainly utilities is what we're paying in insurance.
Right. And that would be for two years, max. And then if nothing happens to the building, it's, we're going to have about $120,000 or $125,000 in raising it?
If we, if we decide to tear it down, yes. Hopefully, we would have some sort of development offer by then. It probably would include raising the building, as you read in Director Buck's comments, that this building, we shouldn't hold our hopes up that this building would be reused and sold as a building that would be repurposed. It could happen, but that's probably not the most likely scenario.
Right. And the urgency on this for approving or not approving it tonight?
The school district is going for state plans approval, is it next week, Brian?
This week.
This week. So, they would like to have some sort of certainty that they should include that build-out of the second floor for us within those state plans approvals, so they can be moving forward with that, rather than having to resubmit at some later date.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm a little disappointed that we didn't have those final numbers here tonight, and for, well, for the, for what the costs were really going to be for the build-out. And I'm a little concerned about not having contingency, but like you said, this is all going on next year's budget, so that can move. But just like anything, if you had another $50,000 on it, or something, or $75,000, because that's probably what your contingency would end up being, you know, 10% or 15%.
Sure.
That, that's going to add, of course, to those costs.
I guess it's one of those chicken and egg things.
It is. Yeah, no, I understand.
You can't really get a final bid and final cost for everything until you commit to doing it. And you don't want to commit to doing it until you know what the exact cost is. So, we tried to get the numbers as close as we could. I know that Brian Adesso has been working very hard to get some of those budgetary numbers, and working with different contractors, to make sure that those numbers are on the high end, rather than, and they're not going up, rather than estimating very low, and then six weeks later coming in with something much higher.
Well, that's always the scary part. Somebody wants to give you an attractive number, and then when reality hits, hits the desk, then all of a sudden, it's different. But it sounds like we're closer than what we were two weeks ago.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Well, it's fine, because we have the ability to do it. All right? We have the The attorney's just mentioning that there is a month listed in the rent adjustment number, but I'm guessing that the school district is going to be open to us talking about an average for the year, or something to that effect, rather than a specific month, because, as you said, sometimes that number fluctuates pretty drastically in a year. And if you happen to get a good month or a bad month, it could be either very advantageous for the city, or very advantageous for the school district. And I don't think that either of us are looking for the school district to lose money on this. We're looking for this to be a good partnership for us, and for us to pay our fair share towards the upkeep and costs of that building. Alderman Zalinski?
As far as this build-out, is any of it movable, if we decide down the road that we want to move our City Hall somewhere else, or it just becomes too expensive for rent, because we don't know what the future holds? But is any of this movable, that this $350,000 isn't just there to stay after we move? I don't know, if Brian could answer that, or?
Well, basically, this is walls, is what it is.
Just walls?
Yes. There's a little bit of cabinetry that would be in there, and walls. So, I'd say 95% of it probably isn't movable, probably could not be something taken with us. But I don't know why you'd want to necessarily bring some of those things with you. It probably won't fit in the next building, either.
I was wondering what the building, how much in build-out did we have at the health facility that we're at now, that we'll be taking a loss on to have a move forward here?
We did very little build-out. Is there any, looking, is there anyone around that was here at that point? I don't think there is. We built a couple walls with our own staff in that building. But most of it, it was a doctor's office before, so it pretty much was set up. The way we're using it is the health department. The main change is, I don't know if you've been in there, there's a conference room in the front. That used to be one big, open waiting room, and we put that wall there. And I don't know if there's a lot more beyond that. So, we're not really losing much build-out in that case.
Okay. Did we ever think about if they were open for us to actually purchase this part of the building, instead of the rent, or rent to own? Was that ever in that study that we paid for? Or was that just plans, or we ever think about that, instead of just renting?
I'm not sure what study you're talking about.
The, what we approved for the layout and everything, I don't know if there was a study that went along with that, to see?
Oh, no, we, that was just architectural drawings.
Architectural.
And we did not ask to purchase the building. I don't- I don't think that we could afford to purchase the building, but we didn't ask them if we could do that. The building was a million dollars, more or less. So we'd be looking at a half a million dollars in addition to what, what this would be as well. So I don't know if that would necessarily be a good deal for us then at that point either. We haven't run the numbers to see how that would work.
Yeah. Well, I think my standpoints on this subject have been displayed in prior meetings and I just don't see it as economical for us even with those numbers because we have this building still sitting here. I wish I could be for it. It would be a nice grand idea to work with them, but I don't see any other really, other communities doing it. But I guess we're going to give it a shot. Stinks that we're going to start renting when we knock renters all the time up here in the community of Manassia now. We've got to go about renting, but I hope numbers come in where they're supposed to be at so we don't get hit even more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I'm going to change any minds, but I got to put my two cents in anyway. I've been thinking a lot about this. And yes, I understand that there are some unknowns about this and how things will evolve as we move forward and that forty thousand dollars in annual savings might make some question whether the move is justified. And I think that we need to think a little bit bigger and beyond this single transaction. What are, what's the one thing that vibrant downtowns have in common? I think it's people. And people who come to work every day, people who buy lunches and gifts and who bring more people to the downtown to spend money. And all of that adds to the vitality of our downtown. So in my mind, there's a huge economic impact to this proposal that goes beyond a simple agreement to lease some space from the school district. Some of those numbers were provided in our frequently asked questions. That was in our packet. And Director Buck, for the folks that are here this evening and the people who will be watching this on Thursday, can you tell us more about the economic impact numbers that we learned about?
Sure, I can talk about the economic impact numbers. So they really broke down into two. One is the economic impact of having the school district and city employees in the downtown area. And really, we reached out to Fox City's Economic Development Partnership. They recognize that the economic impact of having eighty-five employees downtown every day, five days a week, and some of us more than five days a week, has an impact of about three point three million dollars. Yeah, I should say indirect impact on the community as well as there's, be five indirect jobs that would be created and nine induced jobs. So the, I guess annually, what Fox City's Economic Development Partnership is saying is somewhere around five million dollars is going to kind of be pumped into the community by having this many employees in the area. And as you had mentioned, you know, more bodies downtown, more activity, there's more shopping, there's more vibrancy. Vibrancy brings people. Nobody wants to go somewhere where there's nobody. So, you know, all those have indirect consequences as well. The school district also estimates that they're going to be using the large meeting spaces on that first floor for training. So every month, they would have about a hundred people downtown training for a day trip. They would also, six to eight times a year, they would have thirty to fifty people, excuse me, a month, they would have thirty to fifty people coming down for training as well. So you're looking at about four hundred plus people that are currently not coming downtown, being downtown every month. The Convention and Visitor Bureau of Fox City's estimated about fifty-eight dollars per person per day for one of these day trips. They stay overnight, that goes way up to like a hundred and seventy-five or a hundred and eighty dollars. And that's just buying gas, buying, you know, stopping at the grocery store, stopping at the gas station, coffee shops. But also, again, as, as you had mentioned, as I had just mentioned as well, that vibrancy of having these people down here, I mean, that is one of the most important things for any thriving downtown is to have a lot of people here all the time. So, I mean, those, I guess you'd call them direct impacts, but they're kind of indirect impacts, have a very positive financial impact on, on the community.
And those are annual numbers that they provided, so you could multiply that out over the course of a thirty-year lease. And we're talking a lot of dollars flowing through our downtown.
The other thing you have with that as well is anytime you have more people, you may get more economic impact that follows that. You know, the same thing with when Manassia Centered, those employees downtown have spurred a lot of interest in our vacant storefronts downtown. And you'll see a lot of that stuff coming online in the near future. So, yeah, this would just be another building block adding on to that as well.
And then you can, we can add to that the potential added impact of redevelopment of this site and bringing more people to our downtown.
Sure, sure. This site will be challenging as, as it's in the frequently asked questions, a very small lot, a very small amount of parking. So to reuse the building might be a challenge. As the mayor had said, you know, we would, Alderman Benner had said, we would market this property through a Realtor for several years. If we had to demolish it, at that point, you'd have a clear site, which is much easier to be redeveloped. It's still very challenging because it's very, very small. But there are always opportunities to possibly combine it with the site next door. But yes, you're correct. So anything new would add on to that impact.
Okay, thank you for that. So over time, we're looking at saving money, increased economic activity in our downtown, and opening new opportunities for redevelopment within our city. I think the school district has, and the school board have made a bold commitment to revitalization efforts in our downtown. And they've asked us to be an active partner in that endeavor. I support this, and I think it's a partnership that, that will pay big dividends for our downtown and our, and our community in the future.
Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. Kind of piggybacking off of that, I think we need to remember that as of now, both this facility and the other facility are not on the tax roll, correct?
Yes.
Where that's, One Hundred Main Street is not going to change. So by sharing that space, we open up the ability to market this, to put this back on the tax roll and grow our downtown. And that's why I support this.
Alderman Sluski?
Just pigging it back after what Alderman Nichols said, I don't even know why we talked about the economic impact of the school district being down here and those people because they're already here, they made their statement, they bought the building. Us voting and to have our lease with them isn't going to bring any more people downtown as of right now because we don't have this place sold. And I agree with her when she said we should be thinking big. We should be thinking big. My grandpa brought this up fifty, sixty years, fifty years ago about our, our City Hall. We should have the police, we'd have the city garage, we should have the police department, health department, police, the fire and everything in one building, not just with the school district. I think we could be doing better by having us work with, right in hand with the police and they can, I bet you they can attest with that. It's just, we're not thinking big enough in this subject.
Alderman Spencer? Just again, piggybacking. You made some good points, thank you for that. This, you know, as we're talking about all these additional people downtown, one thing we've discussed in the past is that we're going to be, if we get all the people downtown we hope to have, we're going to have additional parking issues. So if, if there's no other use for this, this footprint, that this could be a parking lot that could support some of the downtown business as well.
Do you have any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call five-one.
Item five is the lease of one thirty-three Water Street. And I, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the correct address is. I pulled one thirty-three off a map that we were using for voting. And I think that someone else has one twenty-three, but this is the former Close Guard Building. We do have Dawn from Best Friends, she'd like to tell you a little bit more about their project. She was here, it's a month ago, two months ago now?
Oh goodness, I don't even remember if it was two months ago.
Somewhere in there. And.
And I believe I pulled mine off of the mailbox.
Okay.
But if I didn't have my glasses on, you never know. I just, we didn't have the option to have a PowerPoint today, but I did want to bring some slides to highlight some key points tonight. May I? Well, thank you very much. I don't know about that.
There's only four left. Oh, okay.
There should be a total of twenty, so.
I think we got that all straightened out now.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Dawn Golkey, and I'm the Executive Director of Best Friends of Nina Manassia. I grew up here in the Fox Cities, so I'm homegrown, as they say. I have a Bachelor's of Science and a Master's in Business Administration. I've been in the nonprofit field now for over twenty years with fourteen years of an experience as an executive director. Twelve years right here in the community at Best Friends of Nina Manassia. So when we talk about what's going on here in our community, I have an invested interest. This is the area I grew up in, this is where I came back to, this is where I work and I'm raising my family. Tonight, I want to tell you about the Learning Harbor. Phase one of the Learning Harbor began two years ago when our board started looking at the Nina Manassia Joint School Districts for 2013, 2014. And we were extremely alarmed to find out that only twenty-five percent of economically disadvantaged students are proficient in reading and only thirty-one percent are proficient in math. That's the basic skills when you're talking proficiency. That is not acceptable to us. So we needed to take action, we needed to do something. That's where the Learning Harbor was born. We are creating enhanced writing, reading, and math scores through the art of boat building. And that is our phase one. We've had tremendous success so far. Phase two is why I'm specifically here talking to you about a lease agreement. When we think about what the future means for our kids, when you only have twenty-five percent proficiency in reading and thirty-one percent proficiency in math, your kids are not prepared for employment. So we would like to teach our kids employment skills so that they are prepared to be a part of your workforce, so that you can have a thriving community. If you turn, I'll let you turn to the first page of your PowerPoint, look at some beautiful pictures of my kids as they're building a boat. But let's move on right away and let's look at the second page. Let's look at phase two. Creating a business venture for the town of Manassia. Bringing that vibrancy to our community where the riverfront is alive with the arts, restaurants, our history. Having residents bustling around, taking advantage of their natural resources right here in their backyard. Right now, we don't have any waterfront amenities when it comes to the silent sports. The Learning Harbor would be creating waterfront amenities for you at our cost. We would include canoe, kayak, paddleboard rentals, even concession sales. A true partnership with the community to focus on workforce development and employment skills that kids in your community can use to maintain employment and make sure that we continue to thrive. We would specifically look at operating our business between Memorial Day and Labor Day. A minimum of twenty-five hours a week with a uniform static schedule of operation. As I mentioned before, rentals would start with canoe, kayak, and paddleboards. We did do polling of the residents, and that is where the majority of their focus wishes to be. Now granted, this was an unscientific poll. I cannot claim that it was a scientific, by no means. But we went out to the Trestle Trail, we talked to people that were using it. We also went downtown and we were talking to people that didn't necessarily use it. And that's where they would like us to start our focus. Concessions that we would sell would include healthy packaged snacks, various grab-to-go food items, ice cream, non-alcoholic drinks, fruit, and similar food items. I truly see this as a win-win for Best Friends and for the community of Manassia. The Learning Harbor will act as a catalyst for redevelopment. It will revitalize a community landmark that has not necessarily fallen on the best of times. And it will be a destination for trail users. There are three hundred thousand people that use the Trestle Trail. We need a way to draw them off the loop to downtown Manassia. We need a midway point, a gathering place. You also need public restrooms, which is something we would include in the renovation and keep open year-round at no cost to you. This can only enhance your current plans to create green space in a park-like setting. Now, as everyone knows, or most people know, I'm a numbers person, and I'm assuming most of you in the City Council are too. These are the terms that we would be looking at or be interested in exploring. We would look at initial five-year contract with a second five-year option. And I want to make that clear that it would be a second five-year option. The plan that is currently in your agenda was misstated, said two five-year options after the five-year contract. It's initial five-year contract and a second five-year option. So this would give Best Friends of Nina Manassia the longer timeframe that they're looking for to make financial sense for us. At the same time, it doesn't tie your hands. We know that there are a lot of plans in the air right now and that things downtown on the waterfront could go in many directions. So we are also willing to write in and opt out and have a buyout option after three years. Obviously, there would be capital improvement payback criteria. We would base it on a straight-line method of depreciation over a period of ten years. So the longer that we would stay in, the less of a payback there would be. The reality of it is, this building has been vacant for ten to fifteen years. Right now, with the various plans that are out there, you're talking potentially four to five years before there's movement in that area to begin with. So you're already talking halfway through the period of time that we're interested What we want to do is address your concerns. The better that Manassia does, the better our kids do. If a redevelopment comes forward, we will graciously step aside and we will not encourage any type of public relations nightmare. Want to be honest about that. No matter how much I would say that we're going to be a gem for the community, like I know we are going to, and how much of a catalyst we're going to be by bringing people down so that when you're ready to move forward, they're there. If something better comes along, that's going to be better for our kids. We're going to allow that to happen. And we believe that these terms will help that. It'll give you flexibility and won't tie your hands. It really is about creating a win for Best Friends of Nina Manassia and a win for the City Council. So when I look at the future, I see two things that you can do. You can wait until everything is perfect and you guys can jump all at once. Or you can build incrementally, take advantage of the opportunities before you, don't let them slip through your fingers. And who knows what will happen? Let's leverage some community resources and work together on those. Let's leverage some community resources and work together on those. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
So I think what we're looking for this evening, first, of course, any questions that you might have, but then also probably a motion to either direct staff to negotiate a lease and bring it back to the council, or direct staff not to negotiate a lease. So, I mean, we're kind of looking for direction at this point, what the council feels is the best, best way to use that site in the long-term and short-term, I guess.
And we need to move forward as well.
Yes. So, Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. I will make a motion to direct staff to work on a lease agreement with Best Friends of Nina Minasha regarding 133 Water Street.
There's a motion, a second?
I actually have a question.
We can now, we can start with questions as well.
Thank you for making this, this is very intriguing, I think. I do have a question regarding, you mentioned renting kayaks and boards and so on.
Yes.
Would you also provide for launches of private kayaks and boards and so on?
That is not something that we would argue with whatsoever. There are many opportunities for us to bring handicap accessible launches in and to encourage silent sports as a whole. We've also looked at different things such as the bike rental, which is not, not on the top of residents' minds right now, but there's that, there is cross-country scheme, there's a variety of things that could be done. Right now, we're going to focus on the waterfront. I think it also aligns very well with a place on the water.
Okay, thank you.
And just for the public's information, there already are several places to launch within the city. There's one at the Trestle Trail, there's one downtown, and there's one at Jefferson Park. So just if people are looking for a place to launch their current kayaks, we'd welcome them in any of those locations as well.
What we need is something for residents that do not have.
Exactly.
And that's an amenity that does not exist right now. In fact, it was even brought up the other night when Nina was having their discussions with Arrowhead Park as well.
Are there other questions or discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you.
You see, we got one page upside down, unfortunately.
Yes. I love the copier.
Yes.
I would like to ask you more about the, the plan for build-out of the facility. I'm looking at the dates and I'm wondering when you plan, when the plan says you'd be in operation at that facility.
Well, actually, that is left out of there right now. It was too hard when we were putting together to put a date because of how many balls in the air that are going on right now. We would like to move on this and those are estimated dates based upon how fast City Council moves.
So looking at the steps you have outlined on that page?
We would focus on security of the building first. So we would want to be flipping over windows, working with the doors, working on that securement, getting through the winter, then we would be moving to more of the outside aesthetics at that point. And that where it comes, that is also where it comes to building the public restrooms as well. With the way that it's set up, and Mike, you'll have to help me if I must speak, but we'd be creating two specific restrooms, one that's for inside use and one that's for outside room use with public access, where it could be timed, it could be kept open, closed at night as well, to provide security.
And then based on the dates you have here, I'm looking at exterior renovation in the spring of 2018 with landscaping and signage and exterior seating to follow. So would it be safe to assume on my part that you're looking at a 2018 opening?
Per concessions, yes. We would start by moving the boat building in, that our kids do, as we're getting the building up to standard for what we need to make it functioning. We also assume, and I apologize for this, but we did assume the City Council would be moving a little slowly. Please take that with a grain of salt and do not hold it against me. I understand there are other things you have out there that you must decide first and that will eventually affect how we want to proceed and go forward as well.
Okay.
So, can I interject?
Please do.
The dates that are on there are probably worst-case scenarios and if things go very well, things might happen sooner in 2017 then.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I guess that's my concern because I've been in the building and around it and I know what's there and what's not there. And it's four walls right now, basically.
It has very good bones.
Yeah.
If it did not have good bones, we would not be looking at it at all. But the reason we're asking for basically two, five-year options is because in order to make our investment in it for this size of our project, it does need to be a little bit more lengthy. But, like I said, we understand that if development's going to come forward and that if this would make you feel more comfortable, we'll create an out for you. We really, truthfully will, something that is palatable.
And that's where some of my concerns come up is because right now, we're scheduled to have a complete reconstruction of Water Street and build a riverwalk there in 2020, which could give the Best Friends two to three years at that location. And then, then decisions would have to be made about whether or not you would stay there or we would have to negotiate the terms of opting out.
Possibly. When we first started this exploration, we actually went to your parks and recreations first so that we would know what their plan is and where they were considering having a trail built along with what you wanted to do with parking. And we believe that our plan will currently align with it. Are we willing to deal with changes? Absolutely. I mean, you can create a lease in what you think's going to happen in the future, but that's seldom our reality. And we're not going to do something that is going to hinder the progression for the city of Minasha. Because like I said before, what's best for the city is best for my kids. When my kids leave us, I want them to be employed and I want them to maintain that employment. It doesn't do me a hill of beans if they don't. That's our endgame.
May I ask where you're doing the boat building right now?
Right now, we are doing it in our building on first floor where we have a vacancy. That vacancy has been there for several years. However, we share the first floor with the Nina Minasha Joint School District for their alternative school. And there have been some talk about increasing their space and the transitional educational tech center as well has talked about they're increasing students and they need to increase space as well. So we need to find another hole. And reality is, that space will only allow us to do the boat building. It will not allow us to do the business that creates a new revenue stream for Best Friends and employment skills for my friends.
And have, has the organization explored other potential sites?
When we originally started this, we began discussions with Fox Crossing, City of Minasha, and City of Nina. And this is what we felt is our best opportunity.
I always feel honesty is the best policy and I have to tell you, I'm very conflicted about this.
That's okay.
Because I, I truly, truly believe in what you're trying to do and your mission. And I'm concerned that those of us up here and, that those of us up here aren't real sure of the vision that we have for that corridor, of the vision that the city has for that corridor. And so I, I'm, I hesitate with putting things there that we're not necessarily 100% sold on and then having to negotiate our way out of that in the future or having that, having something happen there that we think might be a catalyst to activity, but it turns out to be a hindrance to activity. So those, these are the things-
I can understand that.
-that, that go through my mind. And to be very honest with you, we, we do move slowly. Two years ago, I was talking about getting in the budget, some funds to have that building go away because that's what the neighbors and I were talking about, so. And now we hear, we're here with another proposal.
So, I've been here 12 years too, so I've seen it as well.
So, so I just want to be very honest with you that I'm very conflicted about this and I'm really not sure about what the correct path is at this point.
And that's absolutely fine and we appreciate your honesty. We do strongly believe it can be a catalyst and if the council is truly committed to continually to improve the waterfront, I think the action or the inaction will speak volumes.
Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm not conflicted on this. I'm a little disappointed from the first time this was presented to this council that it took this long to get here. And I'm anxious to see this happen. I am very passionate about what the mission is here on all levels. And the only concern that I had with this has been addressed with the ability to have a buyout and if somebody decides they want to do a development down there, they still have the ability to, to buy it out if that's, that's the case. The only concern that I do have with it is that when this lands at the Plan Commission, David, that our finished materials that we're proposing on the outside meet our, meet our zoning requirements. And that, I'm seeing a nod that we've looked at that and that it does and-
Anything you talk about, I will refer back to Keller for that portion of it.
And we've talked in, in the past and I really appreciate them reaching out to me on this, but, so I am excited for this. I like everything that you've put in place as far as being able to continue to work with the changing dynamics of our, of our riverfront and our downtown. And I think that, I, I just have a really hard time finding a negative in this. And I appreciate you bringing this to us and I hope it goes well for you guys. Thank you.
Alderman Zaleski?
Thanks. For what Benner said, I completely agree with him. I am happy to see this brought forward again. I think it'll do that area good, having more people down there because it's, anybody can go down there and see what's happening and it'll be good to see that going on. It's sad that we had even let it get to this point, that it was so blighted that we even thought about tearing it down, but I'm happy that you're bringing this forward. Thank you.
Alderman Spencer?
Thank you. First of all, I understand the risks that Alderman Nichols brought up and certainly those are valid. I also know that there's no such thing as proceeding without risk, so that, that balances in my mind. It really addresses three areas that I feel passionate about and that is bringing people to our downtown area, encouraging silent sports, and, and educating at-risk, at-risk young people, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? I forgot what the motion was exactly, so. So the, the motion was to direct staff to work, to work on a lease and bring it back to the common council for this property. So, your vote would be, a yes vote would be in favor of the lease and a no would be against the lease. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call, five, one.
Thanks for coming tonight. We'll be in touch then in the next few days to get started on that. Thanks. Now I'm not sure where we are. Okay. Item six, special use permit application and site plan review for 324 Nicolay Boulevard. The Plan Commission recommended that with the following conditions, that the lighting plan detailing fixtures and light levels be brought back to the Plan Commission for review and that an amended landscape plan showing the internal parking lot landscaping be submitted and approved by staff. Do we have a motion at this time for the special use permit? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I make a motion to approve the special use permit application and site plan review for 324 Nicolay Boulevard.
There's a motion, a second, is there discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call, six, zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first item is ordinance 16, an ordinance relating to the annexations of certain properties to the city of Minasha. Attorney Captain, did you want to comment on this before we have any?
I think.
What Director Buck wanted?
He was going to.
Okay, Director Buck, did you want to? Okay.
Sure, this is a annexation, excuse me, annexation petition, a unanimous annexation petition for 1462 Appleton Road. It's the former site of Van W.
Yes.
Which has now been cleared. Site itself is about three-quarters of an acre. It is currently in the town of Minasha, even though we just had somebody comment that it was in the village of Fox Crossing. It has a zoning designation of general business district in the town. Per intermunicipal agreement between the city of Minash and the town of Minasha, the city has the authority to annex unimproved properties, which is what is happening at this point. So, to kind of give you a brief history, the, the property owner had been working with the city to redevelop the site, submitted and cleared the site of the former building, submitted a petition for annexation on September 16th, September 16th, prior to Fox Crossing incorporating Town of Minasha, that inter, intermunicipal agreement between the two. So we went forward with the annexation process, so that was sending the information out to the Department of Administration, getting our impact statements, running it through the administrative, administration committee and the Plan Commission. And so it's back here this evening for an annexation. The Plan Commission did on October 4th, made a recommendation of approval with the temporary and permanent zoning of C1, general commercial, with three findings, that the petition was submitted prior to the incorporation of the Town of Minash into the village of Fox Crossing, that the annexation is a logical extension to the city's municipal boundary, and that it creates a favorable environment for future development. Staff is, are going to recommend to common council to approve the ordinance relating to the annexation. So right now, we're kind of in a flux between the determination, the city's contention that that is still the town and we have a right to annex per our intermunicipal agreement and the incorporation of the town into the village of Fox Crossing. So that has created lots of issues throughout, a lot of the stuff we do at the city, but this is one item that it definitely comes to head immediately. So we are going forward with the annexation and maybe Attorney Captain can speak on, you know, the process that we're going forward with the, I don't know, with the village and the, and the city.
This would then be a question of prior precedents which came first. The city received it on the 16th and so our contention would be that this process started before. And so we could move forward with that. I know we just heard someone from the town speak and certainly will be in touch with town or village, excuse me, attorney. The attorney actually had tried to contact me and many of you know I was- The attorney actually had tried to contact me and many of you know I was out the last couple of weeks, actually just returned today and so haven't even been home yet. And so I did send him off an email and said that I'd be contacting him. So as soon as I have an opportunity, then I'll be contacting him and talking to the, to their attorney. But right now, what's before you then, depending on how you want to act, if you wish to approve it, you can approve it or if you, you know, don't want to, we'll go from there.
So staff is recommending approval though at this point? And would, Alderman Zalinski?
Hi. I was just curious, did you guys talk to the owners at all to see what their plans are for the site or they have no idea at this point?
Well, yes, we have the, representative of the owners here, but they do have intention tomorrow at the Plan Commission. They have a certified survey map to combine it with two properties to the south, then they'd be coming forward with a redevelopment proposal. We don't have that currently.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Just to be clear, staff, including the city attorney, is recommending that we move forward with this annexation?
Yes.
Okay. Then since it was recommended by the administration committee and the Plan Commission, I move that we approve ordinance 16-16, an ordinance relating to the annexation of certain property to the city of Minasha, Wisconsin. And this is R. Lewis and R. Lewis LLC.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second? Is there further discussion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If this is challenged by the village and it sounded like they're willing to work with us on it, if I understood the representative correctly, what happens if they challenge it at this point?
Attorney Captain, would you like to comment on that?
I guess, I need a little clarification. What happens when they challenge it as far as predicting the outcome, are you talking about or?
No, with the process because we've had this with another neighboring village and we've posed challenges for things and it never seemed to slow down a process any. I'm just wondering if, if this is challenged by the village, what does this do to our process to help keep the development moving?
We would just be, continue to proceed and so there would have to be some kind of a court order.
Okay.
So without a court order, we would just continue moving on. And obviously unless after we talk, there's something that we're able to work out.
Yeah, you can what if forever, I guess, but it doesn't pay. But at this point, approval tonight will just keep the process moving so that-
Correct.
-the owner can continue to get his CSMs addressed and, and keep his development moving.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
Item two is Resolution 28. It's a preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers. Is there a motion? Item two. We've got too many pages this week, don't we?
Yeah, this is pretty thick. I will make a motion to approve R-28-16, a preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers under section 66.0703 of Wisconsin statutes for lake cottage estates.
There's a motion, a second? Is there any discussion? Could you turn it on? Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
Item three is R. 2916. It's a resolution approving an application to the Board of Public Commissioners, Board of Commissioners of Public Lands to borrow 10.8 million from the state trust fund and authorize borrowing and the issuance of certificates of indebtedness and pledge the revenues of the electric utility. And we do have, we did have Melanie here, she's still back there. I don't know if Melanie or Peggy would like to share a little bit with us what this is
In 2011, we had closed on a lease agreement with WPPI and we are looking to buy that lease agreement out or in essence refinance that transaction. The return on investment was at 6.5% interest and this borrowing would bring that down to 4.25% interest as well as reducing the term on that loan. It would yield a savings of over $2.7 million for our customers over the term of that lease.
So does anyone have questions for Melanie or would someone like to make a motion? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-29-16.
There's a motion, a second? Is there any discussion? We made you sit here all that time and no discussion, huh?
That's right.
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
Item L is appointments. There are two appointments to the Park and Recreation Board. You could take them up singly or together at your pleasure. Do we have a motion? Alderman Keahan?
Thank you. I'll move to approve the mayor's reapportment of Tom Marshall and Rob Delaney to the Park and Rec Board for the term of 10/116 to 10/1/2019.
There's a motion, a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak from the public this evening? Seeing no one, do we have a motion to adjourn? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to adjourn.
There's a motion, a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.